Okay, good afternoon, parents. Right, this is Madam Christie Chan, I'm the H O D of I C T department. And cyber wellness is under the care of this department. So I'll be doing the presentation this afternoon. Together with me this afternoon will be my school leaders, Mr. Peck, Ms. Barria, my I C, am I sorry, my cyber wellness coordinator, Ms. Liu, and also my one-to-one computing program, I C, Madam Masney. So as I'm presenting, right? So please feel free to make use of the chat function to key in any concern that you may have. And my colleagues will help to address some of your concern. Okay, so let's just have a quick look at the overview of today's sharing. So very quickly, we are just going to talk a little bit about the awareness of the current learning trends, followed by just some highlights of cyber wellness issues that we are facing in the school. And finally, we would like to share with you some tips to effectively parent the children in this digital age. Okay, right, let me just start off with taking a look at the traditional classroom versus the new classrooms. We know that the use of technology has evolved so much that we are using it a lot in our classroom in the teaching. The traditional classroom, right, is largely just the teachers and the student being in the room itself. But of course, when we introduce technology, then you notice that learning is actually beyond the four walls already. And with the pervasive use of technology, then I'm sure that many of us will be very used to the term technology ubiquity, meaning technology is everywhere. Okay, and now with the pandemic, right, last year, we had this pandemic. It actually have accelerated the use of technology in the classrooms. Okay, now with the increasing demand of our children using technology for teaching and learning, then obviously, we will be facing with the pressure of the concern of cyber wellness. So there will be some issues of cyber wellness that parents very much would like to look into, I would say. Okay, so very quick. People, okay, so I mean papers, we see a lot of this in the papers today. Today is not as in today's app, like we are going to definitely place greater emphasis in cyber wellness. So this year for parents who are quite active on parent gateway, you probably will realize that we are engaging the parents a little bit more this year because school is definitely placing greater emphasis on cyber wellness. And we would like to work very closely with the parents to reinforce some of this cyber wellness messages. All right, that we are actually highlighting to the children in school itself. Okay, and of course, we know that this blended learning approach is taking place is a big wave in the education scene. And we all know that in secondary school and J C's, right, they are supposed to introduce the home-based learning, right? The yeah, the blended learning. And in our school at Mooty, we just had our very first L W T. So in in term one, we actually have run our L W T. And children are supposed to be expected to use technology, okay, to actually do the L W T task. Okay. So if you take a quick look at this, right? Maybe now that we know the use of technology is unavoidable, it's just impossible for us to stop the children from using devices. Then how do we handle it? And of course, with the increasing opportunity of using the device, the children will actually face certain issues. And this are some of the things that we actually picked up on the ground here in school. From the feedback of teachers, students, and even parents, this will be something that we would like to highlight to all of you today. So you take a look at this, I actually took this out from straight time. This is just a list of the common social media platform that many of our children are actually engaged in today, right? So and with this, actually, something to highlight would be inappropriate online behavior. So if the children are using this social media platform, it simply mean that they are, they actually have to create an account, right? And when they create an account, they are actually providing false personal information, especially specifically the date of birth. Because all this social media platform, right, the minimum age requirement is thirteen years of age. And our children for primary school, you know, they are twelve or below. Yeah, so they are actually not supposed to create any of these account here. And in fact, for WhatsApp, right? The minimum age has actually age has dropped from thirteen to sixteen since April twenty eighteen. And for Telegram, which is up and coming very recently due to some privacy issue, right? Many people are switching from WhatsApp to Telegram. In fact, to have a Telegram account, we need to be at least sixteen years of age. So if our children are actively engaged in this social media platform, it simply mean that they have created an account with false information. So this is something that it's it's happening, yeah, around that. So of course, the other thing that we picked up from feedback and conversation from from parents and teachers and children would be the sharing of password freely. Last term, we talked about password. So our children are very, how would I say, they're innocent. So when they have a cow, right, to them password, oh, you want my password, I'll just give it to you. So they actually have been sharing that password very freely among themselves. And when they start doing this, right, it brings us to the issue of there will be people who are logging into other people's account without permission. Yeah, so why did I actually lease this website here for you is that it's actually just a useful resource? Because our last term, we actually shared the children password checker. So we told children, go in, try out your password and see how how good your password is, how strong is it? And how easy it is for a hacker to actually hack into your account, even if you do not share your password with others? So actually, in this website, they also tell you the importance of, you know, having a strong password and not sharing your password with other people, so on and so forth. Okay, so this is just something that's happening in school among some of our children here. So, okay, then other things that is happening that we actually picked up is we also see a lot of spamming, flaming, and exclusion. So very simply spamming the send back of sending same messages over and over again. For example, recently, I do have children giving me feedback about their friends sending spam spamming them hamster pictures. Because the child really, really love his pet so much that he has been taking lots and lots of pictures of his hamster. And then he starts spamming his friend on the Zoom. So the children appealed to me for help, and then I will have to address this. So this is actually really happening at our level here, people level. And then, of course, flaming. If you there is okay, so of children actually logging into their friends' account. And then they actually post or send offensive messages through their friends' account. All right, then, of course, exclusion is is not really happening a lot, but we do have one or two cases of children forming certain groups, like maybe chat groups and all, and excluding a particular classmate, and then it actually affected the child emotionally. So these are just some examples of what is happening, all right, around. Okay, so from parents, very often, we receive feedback from parents saying that, oh, my child is addicted to the use of devices, spending long screen hours and ask, what is the recommended number of hours that my child should be engaged on the screen? Really, the school stand here is that we will not be able to give you a magic number, all right? But we are actually hoping that we will work together to work on what we say, what we, what we would say is a consistent limit. So basically, today's sharing, right, this afternoon's sharing is really to share with all of you the school stand, all right, on cyber wellness. And we really hope that parents will reinforce our stand at home and in fact, adopt some of the recommendations that we are going to make later on in the next few slides. Okay, so I will not be able to give you a magic number. Is there two hours or four hours per day? But really, depending on the need and how the child is using. Because screen hours here, we also want to be very specific. It will be including children watching television. Television is also a screen, so if they watch television a lot, it's also long screen time. Okay, so really, I will not be able to give you a magic number here. Okay, now, of course, what are some of the things that's happening? Cyber track, some of the, okay, we do have one or two cases of our children being approached by strangers on the internet. So parents are concerned about it, all right? Okay, so actually, this is the main crux of whatever that we want to highlight this afternoon. It's more about the parental support at home. As what I've mentioned earlier on, we want to share with you the stand that the school is taking in terms of cyber wellness. We hope that you will also advocate whatever that we believe here, all right, and then reinforce them at home with your children. So firstly, we want to talk about ownership of learning device. Please, we really, really would need your help to let your child know that the device belong to you. You are the parents, you spend money buying the particular device, so it actually belongs to you. You own it, you have the full rights to it. Because we get feedback from parents that, you know, the children are holding on to it, refuse to share with anybody else in the family, refuse to surrender it when they are home, therefore, they they get to do anything they want with the device. So really, you need to communicate with your child that you own the device and you will be the one that will decide who get to use it and how it should be used. Okay, but of course, as parents, we understand that you want to give your child privacies, you want to give them ownership. But as much as we would like to have this trust that our children are using it appropriately, right? I think it is still important for us to actually ask for their password. Not so much to check on them, but it's really for the purpose of safety and well-being. All right, so because our children, right, beings at such a young age, they are not, they will not be able to pick up signals of danger. But adults like us, right, when we are in the account and we see certain things, we may be able to pick up things that are not so right and then quickly intervene. So let the child know that, all right, that giving you the password is actually important because you will take good care of the safety and you will ensure that their well-being is not compromised. So really, you need to have a lot of conversation, trust, all right, build trust with your children. Yeah, we hope that there's no secrets between parents and child, okay, right? Yeah, of course, the other point is that if we are really open, right, then we'll be able to help our kids better, all right, in in any unpleasant situations. Okay, I think this is important, so how exactly can we do? It's quite impossible to just tell that, okay, you can use, you can use a device or you cannot use a device. We need to be very specific, we need to be very, very clear with our kids. So as adults, right, we need to set ground rules for usage. In school, we have a, we have policies, we'll tell the children when they can use and when they cannot, how they can use it. So at home, likewise, the same structure should be put in place. So we are giving you some example, for example, you can actually state the time that your child can or cannot use the device at home. For example, many of our parents are working adults, right? So nobody's going to supervise what they're going to use the device for. Therefore, you may want to set a timing like it between eight and nine P M. daily because you are probably home at that time. So you will be able to actually monitor how your child is using the device. So that is a time that you're going to allow them to use it. Then they'll say that, but I have got online homework to do. So that I think there is a need for us to teach our children that, okay, then you do all other work in the afternoon and wait till there is, you know, and a doubt in the evening, then you take out a device and use, do your online work. Yeah, so maybe this kind of structure have to be put in place. Of course, I'm not saying that everybody must do exactly the same thing because different household will have, it will have different makeup. So you really have to look at your own lifestyles, all right, the the family habits and then in implement the the rules, okay, or the implement the structure accordingly that fits the your family need. Okay, so and and of course, there's this thing that do not use your device during meal times. When we go to restaurants, right, while waiting for the food to be served, often we'll see what the whole family sitting at a table, but all of us looking at our own mobile, our home headphone or our iPad. So nobody's talking to, yeah, to anyone. So this, this can be actually practice at home. Try not to have device at the dining table. That will actually bring us to actually the third bullet whereby try to create technology-free zones, like places like no device in a toilet, you know, children hiding in a toilet and then don't know what they're doing inside. And then, yeah, pick up the space and it's sitting inside, but you hear the sound inside, you know what they're doing in the toilet or they they lock themselves in the bedroom using, so that actually bring us to what are they doing? And are they actually visiting inappropriate website and all, right? So if we say that in these places, no, you are supposed to be using your device in common area. So bullet two, using it in a common area, like in a living room, in a dining room, whereby I know people walking up and down, able to see what the child is doing, the screen is there. So then it becomes very open and it also pose a kind of like a hindrance. Like if the child really want to do something that is that not desirable, then at least they will think twice about it because it's in the open area, right, and people can see, right? So and of course, whatever rules that you set at home, there must be some kind of consequences. Okay, so what kind of consequence you want to implement again, you can communicate because ownership is important, because if you talk to your child and child agree that, okay, if I break the rules, okay, this is what I'm I'm going to do, I'm going to forfeit the use of device for a day. Yeah, then at least there's ownership and they will keep to it. And in the in the situation that if they really do violate any of the rules, that at least it's come on, we have agreed on this, you you agreed to it. So now you will have to, all right, follow, all right, whatever that we have set up. So this is just some examples of setting ground rules at home, okay? Now, how else can we actually support the 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 children at home? So of course, you say that children being children, right, self-management may not be fantastic at times. So we will still need to activate parental controls on learning devices. So in our school, for children who are in the one-to-one computing program, we actually enroll them in what we call the M D M, the Mobile Device Management System. All right, so the iPad class, we use Mozilla, and for the Chrome tablet, we are using the mobile guardian this year. All right, that is new. So however, for parents, if your kids are not in our one-to-one computing program, then how do you set restrictions, right? In your device itself, you can set screen time restriction, you can restrict the number of hours that a child can use the device. You can actually restrict the use of Safari Internet, okay? So if you actually block it, right, on your child's interface, they will not be able to see Internet, the Safari on iPad, and they will not be able to to do any, go to any of the website there, or you can even restrict game site and all. So even if you are not on M D M, right, that there will be things that we can do on the devices to actually set restriction. Okay, so if you want to know more about how to set restrictions, in term one, we actually have pushed out some step-by-step guides for parents as to how do you, all right, activate parental control on your child's learning device by syncing your mobile phone to your child's device? Yep, so it's actually in parenting, but not to worry if you have missed that. We will put it in our school website and you can always refer to it on our school website. Okay, so this is something now so much about restriction, control. But really, we will also encourage that parents organize more indoor as well as outdoor activities. Example, playing board games, so playing board games at home with your children, that's bonding. Bring your child to the playground and and have, you know, some fun at the playground that will take them away from the device. Go for a walk, cycling at the park connector network, or even doing household chores together, right? So now, parents are going back to office to work, no more working from home. So you may need help with household chores, get your children to do the things with you, do baking, cooking, doing craft work, draw, paint, so anything that you can think of. So spend time with the child doing some of these things so that it will take them away from the devices, okay? Now, and very importantly, we talk about the cyber wellness of our children, right? But we will also would like parents to take care of themselves. Here, we will want adults to also look into the modeling part. So we, as adults, we need to model good digital habits for our children. So I know that many adults, right, we will be reading on our mobile device, our children will also, okay, read from mobile device and all. But we really want to encourage the child to stay away from the device and pick up a proper book and read the book, all right? Read a proper book, so bring your child to a library, borrow a book, or maybe go to a bookshop, buy a book that the child would love to read and and read the book instead of reading from an online platform. Because we also have feedback that parents experience such a situation whereby when the child is reading, right, on the on the learning device and suddenly undesirable and pleasant advertisement pop up on the screen. So parents got caught, oh dear, a a not very nice image is on the screen, and what do we do? And young kids, right, they will, they will not know how to react to it, and they may accidentally open your advertisement. And once they open it, it actually send a message to the cloud somewhere and people that are, you know, giving you all the advertisement, we think, oh, this user is active and this user is actually looking into this. And the next time you realize that when you use a device, more of such advertisement, they come into your device, your account and all. So actually, it's not that our children wants to go to inappropriate website or they want to look at, you know, inappropriate content. It's really sometimes these advertisement came, yeah, suddenly, and the children just opened it without realizing that they actually have opened it. Yeah, so really, if you don't read, then maybe there will be a a less, a less chance of such advertisement can, you know, come into your devices last. Okay, so of course, the other thing that some teachers were sharing that when we're driving, right, you realize that some children are walking along the road, looking at device, not looking at the road, not looking out for cars, not looking at the vehicles. So danger, and worse still, if they are actually wearing a year visa when they are looking, even if the car is going to haunt at them to alert them that there's danger, they are not going to be able to hear anything. And of course, they cannot see the car coming towards them. So we also want to model the use of a device appropriate, the use of devices. Please do not walk and use a device at the same time. And really, as an adult, if there is really urgent need for us to really use our device, right? Maybe stop walking, model it to your child, stop, move to the side of the road somewhere that is like safe. Then we start maybe checking, I'm sure maybe there will be some important messages coming in from your office or from someone that you really have to reply immediately. So but what do we do? We do not just continue walking and then just keep using our device. So stop, step one side, make sure it's safe. And then maybe after that, communicate with your child that, see, this is what I do, and I will expect you to do the same thing. But in the first place, there isn't anything that's so important for you to be using your device, especially children who are in our iPad class, right? We keep telling them that, put your iPad in your bag when you're walking home, do not hold it in your hands. Then there will be no temptation for them to open it up and use when they are walking. All right, and of course, as adults, we also would like to exercise healthy control of screen time, right? So we need to roll, I know it's very difficult because I myself, yeah, I find it very difficult, my my children will be looking at me and then mommy are using the phone as well, this dining table, then, yeah, but I will remind myself and I try my very best. So it really, I I'm showing or I'm, yeah, using it in the not, not so, what do I say? It's not a not-so-good way, it's just that I'm using in a way that I do not want my child to be using. That I must communicate and say that, hey, come on, see, because this is explained to them, it's really adjourned. I need to, you know, handle this immediately. It's only a second, speak second kind of thing, but but yeah, then. So I think communication in in at the end of the day, also please take note. So parents, we really need to grow modern, role model good digital habits for our children, right? Okay, then, of course, what are some of the other things that we can do to actually support our child in the use of digital? So navigate the internet together to understand the usage. Yeah, since we cannot stop our children, right, from going to TikTok, cannot stop them from using Instagram, then maybe what we can do is use it together, find opportunity to use it together with them and then explain to them that, see, this is what people are posting. But whatever that you see here, most of the time, they are showing the good sides of things. And in fact, there are many things that are not even real, right? So they are telling you that, wow, so glamorous to be like that, looks so good to be like that, right? So fun to be, you know, engaged in this thing, these activities, but are they really real? So explain to your child and then, you know, talk to them and say that, well, in order to gain viewership, right? Obviously, they want to put up things that will interest people. Okay, so really, it will be good to actually also be using the internet and and using some of these platforms with the children, okay? And then we can actually, it's just like what, it's just like watching a movie. When we watch a movie, right, there will be certain things whereby we want to just immediately talk to a children and say, oh, see, the language used in the movie, okay, this is just a movie. They use this, but in real life, please don't do these and all. Okay, so this is something that we want to take note of. Of course, initially, we talk about some issues about like spamming and all. It would be good for us to also find opportunity to teach us, like what I say, when they are reading, something pop up on the screen suddenly. So what do we do? Children may not know how to respond to it. Therefore, adults, we need to actually teach them, be very explicit and teach them what should they do and what should they do if they do not, they are either lost, suddenly, something happened, and they really do not know what to do. Then please look for untrusted adult, okay, immediately. All right, so these are just some pointers. So if your child tell you that they they keep getting, you know, spam mails, what do we do? Of course, tell them avoid opening it because once you open it, right, it tell people that your account is active, more will come in. Yeah, so if you do not open the mail itself, you are sending a message to the person that ate this account, maybe inactive, nobody is doing anything to it, then they may stop spending mail to you. And of course, please do not be tempted to reply. And in fact, many of this spam mail, right, they will have this unsubscribe options. So some of us will think into myself, actually, I I learned, yeah, from today's sharing as well that, oh, actually, when I unsubscribe, right? I'm also sending a message to the sender that, hey, my account is active. So instead of unsubscribing, right, they will come me with more, right? So this is something that I just learned recently as well. And of course, never review email address on website or any social media platforms. Okay, so just like I I I tell my children, you should not even be taking photograph and posting photographs on social media platform. Some children, they're very interesting, they'll take pictures of their 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 home. So they're, I say, excuse me, do you know that this angle, you're telling someone who look into a picture that there is no grills? All right, and they can climb into your house through this window because there's no grills. And you're telling people the layout of your house and all. So do not post pictures unnecessarily, seriously, there's no need to post pictures. Yeah, so I'll sometimes use this to talk to the children and all, right? So posting of email address on the internet is actually if if possible, to avoid, right, shouldn't be doing it at all. Okay, then, of course, flaming, if they actually, because of course, our children will be in some chat group or in some social media platform groups, right? Then they realize that they are, they are in the situation of flaming. Then how do we teach our children to handle flaming? People are using language that's not appropriate online. If you root, okay, then how do we respond to it? Do not get angry, stay calm, all right? Always remember to respond politely if there is a need to respond. Otherwise, ignore it and then go to a trusted adult, maybe show it, do not delete it so quickly. Show it to your adults, all right, so that the adults will know how, what is the situation like? And what is the, what is the intervention that the adult should be taking to help you get out of the situation? So please tell our children that if you are in this situation, do this, okay? Of course, there are many more things that you can do, but this would be the immediate and the easiest for us, all right? All right, so much about some things that, some some little things that we can do at home to help our children manage, yeah, digital, this is the use of digital device. Is there any, because we just had our first L W T, right? Are there any parents want to share with us? Do you face any challenges in your child when they are do, when your child is doing L W T? Do they face any challenge, right? Maybe you can actually tap in the chat, tap in the chat function, using the chat function to share with us whether there's any challenge that you face doing L W T, all right? Or maybe you experience, you know, some good practices that you see or you hear from your your friends, all right, that you would like to share with us, yeah, you can actually put in the chat as well. Or if you really want to share, if you do not want to tap in a chat function, I would like to speak up, then maybe you can raise your hand and then we can actually unmute you. Right, is there any questions that we, okay? Any Q and A, any concern that you, yeah? Burning concerns that you want to actually ask at this platform? Okay, so maybe while while waiting for some of the parents to respond in the chat group, right? Okay, this year, what the school is doing is that in term one, right, you realize that we have actually send some resources to you, we share some cyber wellness-related materials via Parent Gateway to help parent manage our children, all right? To guide our children, the youth, and also the lessons that we actually assign to the children via S L S. We also informed you via Parent Gateway to let you know that these are some of the messages that the school is highlighting to your child, and we actually seek your help to reinforce those messages at home. So do look out at Parent Gateway for resources and also for maybe announcement to just keep you posted of. or maybe announcement to just keep you posted of what the child is doing in the school itself, yeah? And of course, cyber wellness is not gonna be like a a subject and there'll be a a period that is, you know, just given to a teacher to just talk about cyber wellness, it's actually um every day, it's it's going to be like anytime, anywhere, any place, to anyone. So uh it can be um, you know, highlighted in an English class, uh F T G P lesson or during a math lesson as well. So especially now, uh many teachers do conduct Google Meet lesson or having a lesson on Zoom platform. So um we will actually highlight uh some uh good online behavior, yeah? So this is also cyber wellness or lessons to the children, right? Right, is there any parents? Okay, that's the question, ah, okay, I'm just waiting for the question to come in and okay, let me just open. Sorry. And long time on gadget, but work not complete, what can we do? Okay, so like what I mentioned earlier on, right, so I think ground rule is very important. So before you actually allow the child to use the gadget, right, maybe you can ask, um do you have homework today? Have you completed your work? So the ground rule is that all school work has to be completed before you can use the device. That could be one of the rules that the parents uh set at home, alright, so uh right, and if you are not aware of what are some of the work, so I think very often parents say that, oh, I asked my child, my child said, finished already, mommy, I finished my work already. So we are very trusting, right, we will then allow our children to use the device, but actually, the child did not complete the work. So I think that will, uh then it will be very important for you to have a communication platform between you and your child's teacher. Um but of course, we'd wanna check on our child every time, right? And then keep asking, oh, any, any homework, is there any homework? So there might be some kind of a communication um platform that's established. Be it in your class dojo or you will tell a child that, okay, I will expect to see you write down your homework. So the maybe the initial will be tough, maybe the initial, you want to verify whether the child is homework or not. But after one, twice, a few times, the child realizes, eh, actually, there's no way that I can, you know, book my, you know, to do to uh just, you know, get, get away, we're just telling, say, no homework and still get to use the device. So really, rule setting is important, um having communication of uh platform established with the teacher is also important now. Of course, then usually, like for myself, I'll tell my children, don't, don't you ever let your teacher give a me a call and say that you have not done your homework, because once I receive that phone call, you know that you're not gonna be able to use a device anymore. So I mean, I trust you, you handle it properly, but of course, teacher will inform parents when, you know, children have forgotten to do their work many times, right, many occasion. Uh once I get feedback from a teacher that you're not doing well in school, uh then I'm gonna stop you from using device altogether. So then you don't have to check them on a daily basis, because you have already set some ground rules there, okay? Alright, now appropriate online games for our children, uh yeah, I think uh games, right, yes, um I I'm not sure whether my perspective is right, I mean, I I'll just share. Um there are many games out there, some games, uh they are very violent, right? And we really do not want our children to get involved in that, because they get transferred to, you know, reality. Um yeah, my son had been watching this, I don't know what thing, what is it, W W E, however, the wrestling kind of game? So he's played, watching it uh when he was in primary three, okay, now he's in J C two already, so I just show you what happened a long time ago. So I have been watching and then playing these games, so he was actually playing this wrestling game with his friend. My son is very big when he was young, his friend was very tiny. So he pinned his friend down onto the ground and I got phone calls, your son pinned somebody down on the floor. Then I went to ask, are you okay? What are you doing? He said, mommy, we are playing. I said, yeah, but you're so big, when you do this, you know, you hurt your friend, without realizing that you are gonna hurt your friend accidentally, you know? Then he realized, oh, okay, so this is not allowed. So then, from then, I know that, yeah, I have to stop him from watching the wrestling, because the grandfather is watching and he watching with the grandfather. So I had to tell my father, please, daddy, can you please watch without the kids next to you? So this is some of the things that's happening, so as parents, I really need you to exercise, yeah, your your control depending on your needs. So of course, there'll be games or there'll be uh videos, there'll be things that we don't want our children to even be exposed to, then you have to put a stop there. But I also think that there are games that are actually um good, because it's about psycho motor skills, is about eye-hand coordination. So um I I'm not so sure, because I look at it possibly, was recently, uh because when we have, we had the pandemic, we were from home, right? So I get chance, the whole family is at home. So I saw my children playing this game, uh overcooked, I'm not sure whether the correct name, overcooked is about cooking. So the children will go to and get the bun, put it on the plate, and then somebody will put the meat, and then you have to serve the 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 thing. So I realized that I have very bad motor skill. That all I was tasked to do is mommy, put the bread on the plate, I said, okay, I put the big bread on the bed plate. So I walked, I fell off the stairs, I dropped, so the 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 bun never get onto the plate. So my children was never able to put their meat and their vegetables on the bun, so we lost again, so I got a lot of scolding. Mommy, what are you doing? Where's the, where's the bread? Then later on, I volunteer, I wash the dishes, so I just stand at the sink. Mommy, you need to go and get the dishes, you cannot just stand at the sink, the dirty dish won't come to you. So there will be all these things, so I realized that my coordination is bad. Then I realized, oh, okay, actually playing game not that easy after all, you know? So really, there may be games and there are also memory games. Recently, my girl made me play my, uh what was this, Mastermind with it, with her online, and it's really about thinking strategies. So um really, do we stop all games? I would say probably not, but as parents, really want to take a look at what is the game that your child really want to play. Um maybe you also try it out yourself, if you have the time. Then decide whether you are gonna allow your child to do it or not. Yeah, because in Kubits, there are also games there, but the Kubits games, I realized it actually helps with stimulating thinking, eye-hand coordination. And they also do things like uh memory. And the children are supposed to play a game in Kubits platform to earn some credits. And uh I mean, they have to do math question first, uh they have to do math question first. And by getting math questions correctly, earn credit and they are able to use these credits when play a game in Kubits. And the games are actually very good games there, yeah, so please don't stop all games, can, right? That's where um the the, where we are coming from, okay? Right, is there any other questions? Nope, alright, so I think that's about all, oh, there's someone not coming in as well, okay? Sorry, I don't seem to be able to get it out on my screen here. Yeah, okay. Oh, yes, 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 you can actually block Safari, if you are using iPad, right? Uh you can set restriction, yes, you can, so you just go to your setting, right? You go to restriction, you go to setting, you go to restrictions, you can actually restrict Safari. So when a child opens uh the, use the iPad, right? Um they will not see the icon at all, they cannot use it, yes, you can actually block it. Uh if you need help, right, um no worries, I will include it in the step-by-step guide, alright, and then post it in the uh school website, okay? Right, let's also start the video. Do I start my video? I have got this thing here, no, let's start your video. Yeah, okay. Is it all? Okay, so I think um that's, oh, one more coming in, I'm so sorry. Does the school need the children too, I says? Uh it depends, it really depends on what is the task that the uh DJ is asking the children to do. Because, uh for example, uh either the the teacher is expecting the child to do research work, then yes, maybe they may need to go to Safari to look for uh reading articles, they need to do research, go to websites to find more informations and all. Yes, so it really depends on the task itself, right? Okay, that's all, no more question coming in, right? Thank you, parents, thank you for your time this afternoon, thank you for joining us, alright, we really um, right? Uh hope that we have give you some tips that you can actually make use of at home, alright, with your children. Okay, right, thank you, so uh you can actually leave the Zoom meeting, right, thank you so much. Okay, thank you. Alright.